Mayor and Board of Order. First, we'll do the Pledge of Legions. If I could ask Mr. Bryant, Mr. Crispler from the Boy Scout group to come up and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you all for doing this, we appreciate it. Sorry for throwing it in the air.
Dear God, we thank you for the stage you have created for us, a day that's like none other than a day that's so crucial in our country. We thank you for the men and women who have fought and died for this country and for the ability for us to vote on this national election day. We ask that your will would be done in this election, Lord. We ask that you would guide our decision-making during this meeting. Your will would be done here in the city of Will. We pray for the families and the men and women that are fighting for our freedom around this world. Ask all these things your name, hang up.
Item four is to approve the amendment. Do I have a motion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item five is to approve the documents numbers listed on your amendment. Do I have a motion on that?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by doctors, second by groups. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item six is to approve the minutes from the regular mayor and board of August meeting of October fifteenth. There is a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item seven is a consent agenda. Do I have a motion on that?
Motion approved, second.
So, motion and a second on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item eight is the tabled item for planning PL eighteen forty-three. Austin, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, sir. The item ten from the last meeting, we did receive an email on Tuesday, October twenty-nine, that your staff before the next meeting requested to move to the next meeting for a side three time. The advocate is here, and I'd like to see if there are any questions for him, but they did request to table the next meeting.
Is there any question from the board or a motion?
Well, have you ready on the nineteenth?
Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second to table to the nineteenth of November. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Oh, 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 we're gonna keep this meeting underwater.
First off, my name is Sherri Price. And first off, we can't hear, your lights aren't turned up enough, we have no idea what he is trying to table. It is the motion that we vote tonight on whether or not he's gonna be approved for the convenience store on the corner of McInville and Pleasant Hill. We vote no on the table.
Well, the board gets a vote, and it's pretty general that when there is an item that has to be tabled, it's just a courtesy that's afforded while someone is still working on a project. I don't know that we've ever not allowed something to be tabled.
Okay, so that means that we all will have to come back here again on another time.
Is there a limit to how many times it can be tabled, sir? I'll leave that up to our attorney to answer.
There's my, we don't have all the four members here.
Well, you're not. Doc is on the line, but all of them, nobody's not here.
And so, there's another reason to table it, it requires a supermajority, so you have to have five vote, okay? That's supermajority. And the policy of the city, we need to have all of the older persons here, that's the only fear for everyone, and Mr. Miller is not here. So, that's the reason, there's no other nefarious reason that I know about, you know, to table it.
So, the developer has told us that he is engineering a better product and has not finished with it, it's the way it was understood by me. And you're the developer?
Yes, sir. Well, I'm the engineer at the company.
Engineer, okay.
Can we voice our opinion on the matter?
You can.
While we're here? Okay, our opinion, and I can probably speak for most of us, is we do not want a convenience store. It is going to be a hazard, that is an extremely dangerous intersection. And just last month, we had a DeSoto County Sheriff get run over and had to be sent to the hospital because of the danger at that intersection. That's not the first one. We've had a lot of people have major wrecks, vehicles turned upside down on that intersection. We do not need a convenience store, especially right down the school, down the street from the school where you're gonna have kids pulling in and out, possibly. Convenience stores tend to harbor riffraff. People hang around them, there's theft and all other sorts of things that hang around convenience stores. We don't need that in the community. We have a convenience store right down, less than a quarter mile down the street, and everybody goes to.
Pleasant Hill Travel Center.
It's walking distance, there's three roads.
Hold on, don't speak unless you're at the podium. So, I need you to state your name and address, home address for the record.
My name is Sherri Price, I live at twenty-two forty-five Sweeney Road. I know I'm not within the city of Fernando, but it will affect me because I'm less than a mile from that intersection. And one day, I probably will be in the city of Fernando, if not the city of South Haven, because I'm sandwiched right in between. We met.
You're kind of in that no man's land yet.
I'm in that no man's land. We would prefer to stay in the no man's land, but one day it's gonna happen, we all know it. But we would not be opposed to a building that may however, an office complex, you know, an office building, maybe an attorney or something of that nature, or maybe even a bank, but convenience store absolutely possibly not. And all of these people here, all of these people here, we are against that.
Well, we will be hearing this topic on the nineteenth. The developers that are here will be ready, and we will be hearing it on that date.
Now, the developer wants to redo his format?
I think we're gonna take him at his word, this is first of our meeting, and we're gonna take him at his word, we'll be here on November nineteenth to hear it.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Thank you. Can you state your name and address to the record?
Closeton Hills, not here. Closeton Hills, not playing.
Let me say this, so this is the second speaker we've had come up here and talk about wrecks. We know there are a lot of wrecks, especially since Sweeney was put through from South Haven, and the county and the city are actively working together to design an intersection improvement there, with the hope being that it's done before the school opens. But we are working as a county and city in concert to try to make that a safer intersection. There are engineers engineering it right now.
Okay, as I said, it's been twenty-five wrecks at my door, at my door.
I would believe that, yes, ma'am.
Would they store with there? And other things, whatever you're all excited, that's gonna be even worse. So, I need for you all to, like I say, I've been begging, and I don't know how many policemen is in here that know I've been begging, boy, they'd like, at least they'd like to be put there, so people will stop.
Right.
They turn upside down in my yard, in my yard. There are times we cannot get out of our driveway because there's so many wrecks going on, there's a wreck right there in my door. Something needs to be done, now this has been decided, we're gonna have a store over there now, so what else is going to happen?
So, I will say, nothing's been decided about a store being there, that'll be decided at the next meeting.
Nothing's been decided, okay, but something has to be done at that intersection.
I totally agree.
Because the people that's coming down Sweeney, their thinking that the people in Pleasant Hill are gonna stop, and they don't.
And there's a lot of new people coming down Sweeney that didn't used to know that way.
Yes, it is. Like I said, we've counted twenty-five, those are the ones that we've seen, not the ones that we did not see. Something has to be done. Now, you know, across the way, that's your office, but a light or something has to be put at that intersection.
And this board voted maybe six weeks ago to work with the county on that, and the county has engaged Wagner Engineering to design something for that.
Another question, are you all gonna open that area up?
What do you mean?
I mean, would you all, okay, I've been told that there's gonna be like a fullway there right there in my, opened right there at the intersection?
What's a fullway?
That means like, you know, so that the buses can turn around and all of that?
I don't know anything about that, that's in the county.
No, I don't know anything about that. So, the only thing that's gonna be done at that intersection is a light.
Either a light or a roundabout.
Roundabout.
That's worse. That's worse.
Anyway, we're gonna hear this item next meeting, on the nineteenth.
May I add something else to her traffic problem? I've been to the sheriffs, I've been to Fernando police, these people are coming down this road, it's marked thirty-five miles an hour, they're doing sixty. They're trying their best to run over us going to the mailboxes. I have got South Haven coming at least once a week, setting a radar on their end. I have asked the county to be more positive, they are, I'm seeing them going up and down the street. I've yet to see Fernando, because I've been down the top two cheaps, I've yet to see Fernando put any radar on their end of Sweeney Road in between Pleasant Hill and Star Landing. We've got to stop these people from doing sixty miles an hour, because when that school opens up, Katie barred the door, you're just gonna be uncontrollable. Thank y'all.
We're gonna move on to the next item. Oh, yes, we have two cars, your part behind this building, you're blocking the fire bay door, white Honda CRV and a gray Toyota Tundra. Those vehicles wanting you, if you would please move. All right, I have nine personnel doctors, and that motion is a personnel doctor. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item ten is the donation document, that motion on that. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item ten is the donation document, that motion on that. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Hey, Jared, would you like to come up and serve for Jerry for your brother's marriage? Okay, so this next item is a presentation on the Challenger Soccer Program that's held for those ages five and eighteen with special needs, and it was just such a great program, I wanted Jared to come and get some recognition about it, and let everybody understand what it is. It was, and that way, we're hoping we can garner some attention for it, people coming out and working more number six.
Thank you all. So, we had a conversation about this time last year, last year we were planning a meeting here in Hernando, and we were examining programs we offered, and realized there is a segment of the population at the end of it, we don't offer anything for that segment, that's the special needs population. So, had a conversation with Michael Carson, our sports director, who's our soccer administrator, and kind of set a goal to offer something for this twenty twenty-four. Started talking about it more in depth in the spring of twenty-four, and reached out to Jennifer at Southern Pediatric Therapy who partnered with us, and she and her team were excellent, she worked with and making this successful program. Wanted to introduce Michael and congratulate him, thank him for the work that he did, and he's gonna come up and describe more about the program.
Yeah, so, I would say this is a, this is kind of hit at heart, because I have been involved in sports for a long time, I've seen these types of programs, but I felt like we needed to offer these kids with special needs, not just a chance to come out and learn around, but to try to learn, try to, the goal was to try to pick them apart, get them to do more than what they're used to doing, but have fun with the same thing. So, real quick, we had eighteen registered participants, no one female, ranging from five to seventeen. Those participants had disabilities including anxiety, ADHD, autism, nonverbal, and two Down syndrome. We had a pretty big group as far as first time programs. We also had over fifty volunteers or buddies that attended and helped with these children and helped them reach their goals. The buddies were made up of students of Mary Lou's Council, Hernando Middle School Boys and Girls Socrates, Hernando High School Boys and Girls Socrates, and a couple of just registered volunteers. With that being said, I want to say a special thank you to Scott and the mayor's youth council involved, to Hernando middle school and high school coaches for getting information out to their kids and players and supporting this program. Special thanks to Blair Jeffries, the middle school women's coach, she was actually out at three sessions helping, and that's just, it couldn't be done without the volunteers. So, the program was set up and designed to give participants an opportunity to have fun, test them a little bit, which I truly believe we accomplished those goals. Each week, we would start with an easy check-in process by giving both participants and a parent a number of wristbands that we made sure that who they came with is who they left with. Once we got the participants checked in, they were assigned to a buddy or two sometimes, we had more buddies than participants, so we assigned, those participants had that specific player. And those, during those buddies, they did an awesome job. We had, like I said, we had seven eighth graders, talked to a lot of the blood runners, but it was a lot of kids, very few adults that helped with this program, so I'm hoping that I can build on the adult by our recreational program. Those coaches, those parents that saw what was going on, because that's the one thing that I did do that I felt was good, is we put that program on Saturday morning around the games every morning, so everybody got to see what was going on. But I'm very excited to say that through the challenges that we had in the first three weeks, we were able to, those participants were able to just make a full twenty-four minute half field game on the last day. They didn't have their buddies with them, they split up, they played against each other. The smiling, the laughs, it's just a different feeling, they just went out and realized they were probably something to catch by soccer. So, at the end of the day, at the end of the season, at the end of the session, they were given a medal, and then we surprised them with each participant taking home of all that we used during the program. I'll end by saying this program was very successful, I've gotten a ton of emails and remarks about when's the next one, what are we gonna do next? So, with the support and volunteers that came out as a part, we just hope to continue to grow this program, and again, I want to say a special thanks to Jared for putting the fire behind me, I had the idea, but I just didn't get off the couch and do anything, so Jared, Amanda Cherry, our receptionist, she was out every week checking in, checking out to make sure that process was done properly, Southern Pediatric Therapy, all the participants and all the volunteers. And I'll let y'all know by the end, some of the comments that I've received since we ended from the parents were, this was a great opportunity for my kid, I can't believe that you have my son kicking ball, I can't get involved in pencil. And I was so excited to see my daughter know that during the game, she had to turn the ball around and go the other direction, because she realized she was going, it was a long road. But these are things that I feel like we accomplished, these kids wasn't there on week one, and we got them there by week one. So, I'm hoping that eighteen jumps up and we continue to add it further, and maybe even push it to others.
I want to commend you, Michael, for running it. You did a great job, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think I'm gonna have to say, Michael does have a soft side. All right, so I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention, so you know what it is next year, and I want to start doing more of this, there's a lot of things that go on in the city, we have approval on our agenda, and I sometimes feel like I'm not getting back y'all to let y'all know how it went, this was very, very successful. Item twelve is the approval of the additional holidays, November twenty-ninth and December twenty-fourth, as proclaimed by the governor. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item thirteen is the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget amendments, approval to publish. Do I have a motion on that?
Motion to approve, second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item fourteen is the approval of the MDOT right-of-way use agreement at I-55, has a bicycle path pedestrian crossing in to use airspace above, we're below the right-of-way of the state highway system. In layman's terms, that is the tunnel between Dilworth and the elementary school, and for years, we have had an adoption agreement with MDOT to use it, and I think we may be the only people in the state who have officially adopted one of the agriculture tunnels. Their lawyers just said it was time to renew the agreement and update the verbiage in it, so that's what we're doing tonight, so we can continue to use that as a bicycle pedestrian right-of-way.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item fifteen, the approval of the Green Tea subdivision of water pollution control revolving loan fund loan, in the amount of five million twenty thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars, for construction or pollution control facilities, and from each assigned that agreement. What that boils down to is, this is a, I believe, a point eight percent loan, through that special water pollution control revolving loan fund, it will not have to, we won't have to start making payments on it until the project is finished, so it won't be in this budget. We will have to make sure that we make a way to pay it back in the next budget, when the time comes, but they're almost through with the engineering, and Mike, would you like to come up and talk just a second about it, to make sure the board knows where we are on the project, and what's next, and what to expect?
Yes, sir, thank you. We have actually held off on survey and design until this document was in place to make sure everything was good to go. We've actually started talking to our survey crews, getting everything lined up to get started, just to see that this is approved. We're hoping to have the design completed by spring of this next year, so we can start construction, obviously this next summer. Should be a fairly quick, quick process. The longest thing will be the right-of-way acquisition, of course, another.
Once it's started, how long will it take to finish it?
It shouldn't take, I would say, as far as the construction part of it, it might mostly be done in one construction season. So, if we get started in spring of twenty-five, it should be pretty much complete by the end of twenty-five.
How many homes would be extended services, do you have, even if it's a ballpark?
Mayor, I don't recall how many, how many, Joe, do you remember? Just around a hundred, yeah.
Ninety-seven?
It was several, I just don't, I don't have the number.
How high do you believe on this?
That sounds about right. It was somewhere in the agreement, I believe.
There's some developable lots, there's some existing developable lots, really.
Maybe the one more surplus I'm selling, the strip park land, but not many, there are, it's just a couple in there.
All right.
Any other questions? None, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you, Mike, appreciate you starting. Okay. I'm gonna drive by your office after meet, see if your lights on.
It will be, we'll be driving.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank y'all.
Item sixteen is the approval of ARPA number six oh four by Hellier Road Water Plant and Madison Lakes Elevated Tank amended engineering contract.
Okay, I guess Pam and I were looking at some numbers that were in this ARPA fund, and rather than pay individual people that need to do work on the project individually, I guess it'd be simpler that I just wind up paying them through my contract with the city. So, it's written in the contract on the geological boreings and information that I needed, the core permit which caused the archaeological study to have to be done on the project, and the environmental study that had to be done on the project. And then, it does include the person or company to be able to inspect the elevated tank, I think they're talking about climbing it about twelve times, inspecting the welding and the painting, so then I would just pay these people through my contract, take care of those things that are, that would be needed for the contract.
Any questions? Any questions from the board? If not, is there a motion to approve the amended engineering contract?
Motion to vote, second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item seventeen is approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Finance Administration to accept Senate Bill twenty-four sixty-eight appropriated funds of two hundred and four thousand and ninety-five dollars to assist the city of Fernando in paying costs associated with improvements, repairs, and upgrades to its water and sewer infrastructure, and to open a bank account separate to keep that money in. That is the money that was allocated to the city of Fernando in the last legislative session, it should be in the mail to us or in our account just any day, and we have to spend it on water and sewer infrastructure and keep it in a separate bank account.
One-time money, I'm assuming?
It is one-time money. And since there was not a budget for that, when we get ready to use it on a project that we think is appropriate, we'll bring it back to this board for approval.
Do you have the money can be held and gain interest, and the interest be spent elsewhere?
I don't know if interest can be spent elsewhere. I know we can gain interest on it, but that matters. And just to put it in your head, the first project we had thought about is the approximately thirty thousand dollars that it's gonna cost to hook up Dogwood Hollow Sewer, so we'll be coming back to y'all with a couple of official quotes on that, I can just roll that one around your head. Is there a motion on item seventeen?
Motion, second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Joe, you're up again, item eighteen is the approval to award the asphalt paving project. Twenty twenty-four bid to Gregory Company LLC doing business as a mercury paving with the lowest and best bid of eight hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred and ten dollars.
We received bids, I told you twenty-eight, and I hope that's in your packet there, we received five bids, you can see that, several of them pretty close, one was a little bit higher, and this time, market paving was the low bidder, they've gotten jobs with the whole, they've done some work for the city before.
It is one-time money. And since there was not a budget for that, when we get ready to use it on a project that we think is appropriate, we'll bring it back to this board for approval.
Do you have the money can be held and gain interest and the interest be spent elsewhere?
I don't know if interest can be spent elsewhere. I know we can gain interest on it, but I don't. And just to put it in your head, the first project we had thought about is the approximately thirty thousand dollars that it's gonna cost to hook up Dogwood Hollow Sewer. So we'll be coming back to y'all with a couple of official quotes on that. I can just roll that around your head. Is there a motion on item seventeen?
Motion, second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Joe, you're up again. Item eighteen is the approval to award the asphalt paving project. Twenty twenty-four bid to Gregory Company LLC doing business as a mercury paving with the lowest and best bid of eight-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, five-hundred-and-ten dollars.
We received bids, I told you twenty-eight. Hope that's in your packet there. Received five bids. You can see there, several of them pretty close. One was a little bit higher. And this time, market paving was a low bidder. They've gotten jobs with the whole one that done some work for the city before. You also see there that's, for the list of the streets that were included in the bid.
Have you been pleased with their work in the past?
Have we done?
Have you, have you been pleased with that work?
At least done, had a few several small jobs around. The town streets.
Joe, do we know when they might be able to get started before it proves this time?
When it starts, it seems like, sign the contract and get their bonds back. Weather-related, you know, get some of the streets done, hopefully. And some of it depends on the weather, some of it depends on how long the asphalt plant stays open.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Now, item nineteen is the approval of the annexation ordinance. So y'all approved for our attorney to start working on the annexation. A part of that is producing an ordinance. And you will see a large legal description in that ordinance, which is the entire new proposed city limits. So that's why it's so large. Joe, Frank, I would, since we cannot interpret all this, I'm gonna ask you to confirm that this is only annexing the civic center ball fields and the road right-of-way in front of it and across the street and the one parcel of, by inter-giatal commerce.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
You did kind of clear up some right-of-way over on Robertson Gin Road that, I'm tied while that together, we needed to do, I think.
So we'll end up annexing Robertson Gin on both sides of the road to get the right-of-way on the other side. That's what the county asked us to do if we were gonna be annexing that. It has a good, brand-new tenure paid job done on it, so we're not taking on a liability. Any other questions on, on that? Kind of a motion to approve the annexation ordinance?
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Now, item twenty, Austin, this one's for you, the discussion of off-street parking requirements for recreational vehicles.
Yes, sir. We received the request to speak to the board regarding our ordinance for RVs in residential zoning districts. So under your staff report, I gave a, just a brief description of what the ordinance says. Generally speaking, anything over twenty-foot in length is not allowed to be kept at your house unless it's in an enclosed garage. It was actually on the agenda at the last meeting, but Mr. Hughes was unavailable to speak. Is he here tonight, Mr. Hughes? Okay, good. He's here tonight to address the board and I'll be at the floor.
Yes, sir. Would you like to come up?
Yes.
Come on.
My name is Charles Hughes. I have three ninety-four Gale Street. We moved here in eighth of May, nineteen seventy-one, May of eighth of nineteen eighty-one. We bought our first camper. We've had one for forty-three years, had no problems. Two thousand, I think, tenth, I'm gonna come by and want fifteen hundred dollars, hire somebody, an attorney to come down here, get passed an ordinance. And I said, something sound right, so I called one of the aldermen. He said, no, that guy, he's running Oregon tags. Said, he didn't have Mississippi tags on his car, on his camper. Said, you've been paying, you know, high-dollar taxes. We started out a thing of eighteen hundred dollars for this little camper we have now, first year. This year, we've paid, still paying two-hundred-and-thirty. And we're requesting to be grandfathered in. And appreciate y'all considering.
If y'all have any questions for Mr. Hughes? So I think what, I'm gonna, I think what you're asking is that we make an exception in the ordinance for your camper. I'm gonna look at the city attorney on now.
Well, the ordinance does not provide for exception. It does not provide for any grandfathering. So in my opinion, if you want to make that available, you need to amend the ordinance.
I'm sorry, I'm kinda hard to hear. I didn't understand.
The ordinance has written, it doesn't provide for any grandfathering, okay, or make any exceptions. And I think to do that, I mean, I don't think it's good government just to do it without it being a policy. And so if the board wants to do that, they would need to amend the ordinance to make grandfathering available to people like you.
All right. Well, that's what I'm requesting.
Good.
I think the motion we take under advisement.
There's a motion to take your request under advisement and work on it and discuss it again, maybe in a month or so.
Okay.
And we will, we will absolutely let you know when the board's gonna take it back up.
Okay.
Yeah, we won't leave you hanging out there. Austin, you have this phone number?
Scott does.
Okay. Oh, yeah, Scott has it, my office. So we'll make sure we get in touch with you.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
Is there a second to that motion? So motion and a second to take it under advisement and come back to the board in approximately a month. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Now, item twenty-one is discussion on the noise ordinance. I've laid a copy of the noise ordinance as it exists in front of each of you. And I know we've been having some more issues with noise coming from businesses, as far as music goes, after hours, or maybe too loud even during the regular hours. Bruce, did you want to address it? No, you'd ask for this to be put on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, I've just gotten a couple calls here recently, or actually a lot of calls in the last year or so. And I'd asked the police chief, you know, since we passed this ordinance, how many violations, how many calls have we had? And then around thirty-three to thirty-four, and it's all coming from the same, it's all on the same business. It's on one business in the city that's had any complaints. And these complaints are not coming from one person, it's coming from multiple people. And just, well, we're gonna look at this and see what we can do to, you know, maybe slow these complaints down or stop them.
Chief, Chief Ellis?
Yes, sir.
Do you think you could, tell us how many of them have made it to court, best you can remember, and what happened in court?
I do not know what happened in court. I will say that that number has increased since I provided them to Alderman Robertson. However, all of them have not been over the limit of the noise ordinance. We have just received complaints of the noise ordinance, of, on the noise ordinance. So we would go and direct it if they weren't over the limit, then we wouldn't write a citation. I wanna say off the top of my head, at least five or six citations have been issued. And probably, I know for a fact, one more should have been issued that was not issued and that was addressed. It will not happen again. But I don't know what happened in court or if they even did.
Did you want to speak?
Okay.
Come on up.
Hey, Joe, I have an estate in Ohio State, twenty-three eighty House Valley. So y'all know why I'm here. Obviously, I own Ivy on the street. And I now have two long-term units and two short-term, two Airbnb's and two long-terms. The long-terms, I'm having, I've had a vacancy, the longest vacancy I've had yet. It's been over two months. I can't, I can't, I can't lease one either. So, and just so y'all know, Mayor, I know you have some rental property as well. I think you have an Airbnb. You live and die by your reviews in the short-term rental business. I've had reviews complaining about noise. I've had people staying in my Airbnb that text me at eleven o'clock at night asking me what time the music stops. I've had my in-laws stay at the Airbnb on holidays, embarrassingly have called me in the middle of the night asking me, when does the music stop? So I'm just here unfortunately asking for more regulation. I don't, you know, I don't know exactly what that means. Me and Bruce have talked about it a little bit. I don't know if it's a decibel, lowering the decibels, as well as some more penalties as well. But clearly, we have a business owner who doesn't necessarily care about the regulation. He just continues to, you know, even the nights, I don't mean to speak, and if I'm incorrect, then correct me anytime. But anytime that the, that the police even do come, the music starts right back up when they leave. So it's just becoming a cost of doing business, for this particular business. It's a citation, let's pay it, sell some more beer, and, you know, get back to honky-tonking. So I think it's really out of character for this part of town. This is on the edge of our historic district in Hernando. I think we all care deeply about that. I do. I love Metro Street. I love downtown Hernando. We wanna continue to do projects here. But, you know, this is an issue that's been ongoing for almost five years and we still have problems. The long-term tenant that I have, they've been with me from the beginning and they've dealt with it the whole time. I care about them deeply. They're great people. And I want, I, not just from, this isn't just a money-making issue for me, it's I care about the people that stay there. And I think if any of us stayed there, we would want more regulation to stop this business or just continuing to bat an eye at the ordinance and the law enforcement and just do whatever they want. So I'm asking for some more regulation, probably decibel level and also times. And then I think we need more penalty because the issue is, irregardless of whether they're cited or not, once the police leave, they crank it back up. So I think that's not being a good neighbor. I want the business to succeed, but it's hamstringing my business. And I'm not doing anything in my business to hamstring their business. So I wanna be good neighbors. I've had that perspective from the beginning. Unfortunately, this is a situation where I don't think the other side has the same aspiration. So just asking for, you know.
Thank you, Austin. Stephen, I would ask you, under the penalty section, which is at the end of the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
It says the responsible party subject to the penalty shall be the tenant or business owner or individual associated with the business owner. It's not the property owner, it's not the person that owns the building, but it's the business owner. And I don't think we've been issuing the tickets to the business owner. We've been giving them to the manager who's there. So we may have three different managers that have each gotten a first offense. I don't know. Would it be appropriate for you, as our legal counsel, to talk to the, to our city prosecutors who have to prosecute this and see what they think we're not doing right so the judge can prosecute them properly? I mean, because the judge, the judge could put the owner in jail, it says.
Yeah, I don't have to do that. No problem. Whatever the board would like me to do, you know, I, I obviously know I live in the neighborhood, so I can attest to the fact that it is an ongoing problem. And this has already been amended once because it's an ongoing problem. And if the board were to call, the problem continued and the bands that were playing, the owner told them, we better turn it down. That's not being a good citizen in the City of Hernando. So I'll do whatever you would like me to do, but I'm gonna voice my support of Austin, all the other homeowners who are disturbed and not enjoying the peace and quiet of their homes when they would like to. That's my position. So I'm not, I'm not a neutral in that regard. I'm a citizen, so I'm just letting you know that.
Yeah, I think moving forward, we've, we've got, I think what we've got right here, you know, another offense, first offense, put the business owner in jail for ten days, second offense, twenty days, third, thirty days. And if that don't work, then we might come back and look at some.
I just feel like somehow we're not getting the proper information in front of the judge for the prosecutors to prosecute, prosecute properly.
Yeah, I'd like to know what the competencies have actually, what actually followed through in court. Before we make any decisions, let's see what, what's been happening.
Well, I may be reading it incorrectly, but if it, the offenses have to occur on the same day, like when the year rolls over to a new calendar day, is it considered a separate offense more? Like, it doesn't even, okay. So it's not like the offenses have to occur on the same evening.
No, that's right. Yeah, that's correct. That's correct.
So if they have three occurrences over a month period, they're still, they're viewed as single offenses? Is that, is that what it's saying?
No.
Okay.
They're each a separate offense, right?
Correct.
So there's like thirty or forty, that last sentence in there says, um, separate offense. That's my, that's my mistake.
But that's true. As Chief said, if there's any calls, if there's been six, citations should have been seven. Okay, so that should be a seventh offense.
Okay.
So, um, we don't have anything here for seven offenses.
Mayor, I have a question, please.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone there from the business in question to speak for them?
Is there anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? There is not.
Specifically from the business.
There is not anyone here from the business.
Do we need to notify them that this was an active item on the agenda tonight?
Oh, we can.
To notify. And I always bring this up because my recollection is that when we've had these conversations in the past, they were not present. And my understanding is that they were offered the opportunity to be present and weren't there for whatever reason. So just from a legal standpoint, I guess it's, I'm asking, do we need to notify them? Do we need to just forgive and move forward?
You know, I don't, I don't think we have to notify them, but I think it would probably be a nice thing to do. And I, I will make sure when it comes back on the agenda for any other action. Tonight was just a discussion, but when it comes back the next time, I'll make sure that they're alerted. Is that Stephen? Thank you.
For the point of reference, do you want the clerk to find out how many, what has happened with, with what sanctions have been applied?
Yes.
To these seven fractions or six. And I would concur with the judges and prosecutors as to their view of what should be done.
That would be great.
No, probably only on the issue.
That sounds like a great plan.
I have a question.
Yes, please come up.
Okay. And I know this concerns him and everything, but I've kind of been on the other foot side of this at one time. I played in a band. We played at McQuaidlo five, six years ago. They had bands every Friday, Saturday night. We had a time limit. We started at five, we ended at nine. And at nine o'clock, we shut down. That was it. And we were only asked a couple of times to turn it down, which we did. And, you know, I, do they not have a time limit at this restaurant?
We do, but it's eleven, I think, on the weekends.
Is it nine or ten during the week? Nine during the week and eleven in the weekend.
Yeah, nine weekdays, eleven weekdays.
Like it's Friday and Saturday.
Well, I just know that when we played, we had shut down. And we did, we were tired. We wanted to play. I mean, this is not Hoover's. I don't know how long I've been here, that long, and now we're Hoover's. This is not Hoover's. We played till one o'clock or two o'clock in the morning at Hoover's, but not in the city, you know. Nine o'clock, ten o'clock, shut, down, be gone. People wanted to come to bed. So I just did was asking that if there was, you know.
There are time limits set, for sure.
Yeah. Well, if they play past that, why are they not, why, why do the guys in blue don't come in here and shut them down, say?
We have been shutting them down when they play past the time limit, except the one time we missed. That's the one he was talking about. But, yeah, we do shut them down at the time limit if we know about it. We don't just sit out there watching all the time. But I think we're all in agreement that we're gonna try to find a good way to handle this better.
Yes.
Because all the neighbors over there are still not happy, and I get it.
Oh, I can understand that. I do. Because, you know, like I said, I've played in van. I fully understand where the neighbors are coming from. Yeah, so.
Well, if Hoover's opens back up and you play out there again, let us know.
Oh, no, 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 no. Better again. And I'm not saying it's not a kind of place for a place like Hoover's.
Sure. But this is in the middle of town. There's a difference.
But this is in the middle of town. If they wanna do that, tell them to move out into the community somewhere. I sell real estate. I'll sell them some property.
Thank you for your comment.
Can I say one more thing, Mayor?
Yes, please do.
Just to touch on Alderman Harris, his point, I think I understand. Just to touch on Alderman Harris, his point, I think I understand his perspective of notifying them. Just out of courtesy, I can get on board with that. Here, here's my position. Whether he's here or not, he may not look at the agenda like I do and see what's going on in the city. I understand. Whether he's here or not, he's well aware of the ordinance and does not care. That, that's, that's my problem. So, whether he's here or not here, he doesn't care. And he's gonna do what he wants. And that's where I hope we can put our foot down and say, you're not gonna treat all of you, treat the law enforcement, and then most importantly, the citizens and neighbors in this way. Here's another thing. I'll just throw this out there. I think the weekends are eleven, the weekdays are ten. Am I, am I correct?
You probably aren't, because I know you read it more than we do.
So, I think that's too long, especially during the week. You know, people are getting ready to go work tomorrow. Um, that's late. I think the weekend needs to be bumped down. I think the weekdays need to be bumped down. And then as far as the offenses go.
It is now on weekdays.
Okay. As far as the offenses go, again, like I stated earlier, this has become a cost of doing business.
Right.
It's a slap on the wrist as far as the time. It's really not a drop in the bucket to them. I, I, my position is first offense, citation. Second offense, if within X amount of days, thirty days, if you get a second offense, there should be a timeline. There should be a, there should be a dead zone where you're, you're barred from playing outdoor live music for sixty days, for ninety days. Do it again a year. Because I think the issue lies in, we're gonna pay two hundred and fifty bucks or whatever it is, and we're gonna rock on and just keep doing what we want. If he gets barred from playing outdoor music, I bet you he decides to turn it down. So.
That's a good suggestion. We'll take that under advisement. Thank you, Austin.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes. Go, go right ahead. You've got the mic.
I wanna, I wanna be clear there, everyone, that my comments were not to defend the, the business in question. My comment was strictly from a legal standpoint to protect the city. Because this guy's threatened a lawsuit going for once. He didn't follow through. But he claimed that he was not made aware that we were having conversations like this that affects his business and his livelihood. So, all I'm saying in my comments is legally, does the city need to notify him? And if we don't, so be it. But I'm not defending him at all. So, I wanted Austin to be aware of that.
Yes, sir. Austin gave you a thumbs up, and he understands.
So, legally, no, no, citizen, it should be informed, posted, made public. Just like everyone else pays attention to what's going on on the agenda. This property and business owner should as well. You do not have to give them notice. If you want to, you can. But if also, it's us that shouldn't stand back.
Thank you, Stephen. Alright, so it sounds like we're gonna go back and do some fact gathering and then come back to this board at a later date. I guess. Go ahead, Bruce.
In the meantime, until we hear back, can we just talk to the judge and say, hey, if you get another violation, let's, let's do, vote what's on here?
Uh, I mean, I can tell him that.
We, we, there is the separation of powers. We can't tell a judge how to rule.
I understand that.
So, I think us talking to prosecutors or figuring out what they need to prosecute, that would be the angle we're taking. Alright, so we will, we have discussed it. There's no motion needed. We'll go back and do some fact finding and come back to this board in the very near future.
Motion to adjourn, that's it.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Y'all have six minutes left to vote. Thank you, Donald.